We're good. All right. I'm calling this meeting ordered. I would like to welcome everybody to October 21st, 2025 meeting at six o'clock. I'm glad to see the great crowd. Can I get approval of agenda, please?
Chairman, before we approve the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add a discussion on the text amendment and the request we heard from the PNC board last night.
Second. Second. All right. That's for any discussion, all in favor of I?
Aye.
I'll have it. Okay. Pastor, Mr. John Haney, would you open up the meeting? You did such a great job and we'd love to, hey, you can come anytime you want.
Well, I'm still waiting for my porta-johns on my bike route and my charging stations to my county commissioner. And I don't know how y'all work it here, but I used to tell my church that the complaint department would be open on Monday morning at nine o'clock.
Okay.
So just whatever you want to do with it.
You want to chair that committee?
Chair that committee? I'd be happy to do that. I've been used to doing it for 46 years, so.
We do thank you for coming.
Do you join me as we pray? Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we give you thanks for another day of life. We are thankful for this community in which we live and the county that we know as Jones County. We're grateful for our elected officials and for those who work in law enforcement, especially this evening, Lord, we remember Calvin Pitts, one of our retired deputies, and we remember Clay Wiggins as he continues to fight for his life. We're grateful, O God, for those who work in the public works and keep our roads in good condition in other areas of the county. We're thankful, O God, for our recreation department and offering something to our children and youth, for our court system and for our DA's office that continues to work hard to keep our community safe, along with our law enforcement community. We're thankful, O God, for providing the resources to make our county what it is. Lord, we're thankful this evening for our county commissioners and for their work. We know that it's a difficult, that it's difficult to please everyone, but give them wisdom and help them where they fail, where they fall short to keep on keeping on. We pray for this meeting this evening as we know that sometimes the task can seem to be great, but we know, O God, that your resources are even greater. Guide them in their decisions this evening as they serve the citizens in their district that they represent, help them to seek, to do what they do for the greater good of this county, for it is in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I'm sorry I can't stay for any of the meeting. I've got an important phone call coming as soon as I get home and.
We thank you.
But I trust you all to do your job, and so I'll just go on home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, if we move on to consent agenda approval minutes, we had the public hearing on October 7th, along with our first Tuesday, October 7th. If the boards had the opportunity to review the minutes, they will entertain a motion.
So moved, Chairman. Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
No new business, we'll go to old business. Mr. Resner, we've got the proposed text amendment for elevation of structure related to roads.
So I'll kind of give the backstory on this and then turn it over to Tim to kind of talk about the language he's developed. So occasionally, you guys hear it here, we certainly get phone calls regarding this, but drainage issues in established areas. So oftentimes, we tell the person, we'll come out and take a look at it. As it turns out, the house is essentially built in a hole, and so it's, you know, that creates drainage problems long-term, and almost inevitably, they're very expensive to fix or impossible to fix. And so I talked a little bit with Tim about that, and he's drafted some proposed language that we wanted to go over with you tonight and see if the board would be open to making that change that would help us out down the road. It certainly won't correct existing issues, but will hopefully mitigate that going forward.
Tim? I've talked to individuals in the industry, some from jurisdictions where there are higher density developments, and that's typically when we do see problems, is when we're seeing lots getting down half acre, quarter acre in size, just not adequate room for drainage because the house was built too low, and now they're trying to get the lot graded, and we see those kind of problems arise at that time. I've got some recommendations put together here that apply to lots one acre or smaller. First part talks about drainage. The, if all the drainage is predominantly going towards the road, we want the structure a little bit higher than if the shed is going both directions because the water can move in two directions, and so the foundation doesn't need to be as high as above the grade of the, the crown of the road. We also created some exemptions, first one being if the lot's over one acre in size. The second one, if a professional engineer designs the layout of the lot, they provide a sealed design, then we just go with that, whatever they've shown there. Third case, perhaps we have a lot with very exceptional topography, and we can look at it either myself and Public Works Director feels that, yeah, obviously, this is going to work in this situation, then we could grant an exemption administratively in that situation. If you choose to move forward with this, under my recommendation there, there's some verbiage we could use to initiate the text amendment process. If we want to discuss that further, that's fine as well. These are just some recommendations that I was able to put together. They're definitely not numbers set in stone.
Tim, I got a question. This is going to be a blanket for the entire county or in neighborhoods subdivisions where there are low-lying lands?
Blanket for the entire county.
High and dry has always been the word, you know, the rule, but a lot of people don't understand high and dry. We all see it, you know, they'll build it in a hole and next thing you know, they're wondering why, you know, they got a problem. I think it's great, I think it's, I think it's overdue to have this so that we do have something in place. The other question? Mr. Kitchen, I see you.
I'm just thinking through all the scenarios that we might, that we might run into. You pull off the road and your driveway's a five-foot drop down to your house, down, you know, levels out, goes to your house. Are we saying the house has got to be five foot 12 inches off the ground from the first floor?
Unless you can meet one of the three exemptions listed. So the first one being if the lot's over an acre in size, then you'd be fine. The second situation, if they provide design by a professional engineer, then we would accept that in lieu. Or if I go out there and it's obvious that the five-foot drop is gonna, it's also canted to the east side of the lot, and the water's obviously going to go the right direction, and they're doing a stem wall for this foundation. In those kind of situations, then we could grant that administratively.
I like the exemptions, I like especially one with the licensed engineer, because if they'll stamp the drawing showing that they're shedding the water away from the house, then that's on the stamped engineer. If it doesn't work that way, it's not a, it's not an issue with the resident coming back to us and saying, you know, you're bringing water out, which is what we always hear is the water off the road is causing problems in my house. So I like that. The only other question, is this, does this need to be done tonight?
No, sir. There's no urgency to this. This is just trying to address a problem that has been observed through the years.
Yeah. Chairman, I think, any other questions? My last comment. I'll, I would ask that we postpone this just so that we can go through, have time to go through and think of any questions that might come up.
Absolutely.
I think that may be something that we need to look at going forward is have something brought, maybe on a, on an agenda prior to the vote.
Right.
Just so, unless it's an emergency situation.
Sure.
That way we have time to vet things.
Right, and we look at it even further. I like it.
How, how often do you see these? And I mean, I can go and take you into a subdivision right now and show you plenty of the five-foot driveways that drop down and there's the house. Other than there, are there, do you run into this in new construction now?
Yes, mostly in the city, but we do have it in the county as well. And I couldn't give you a percentage of how often because I don't inspect every house. Usually I get involved when there's a situation and it's after the fact where this has really been a problem. But there are cases where this would have alleviated the problem.
Yes.
I'm curious, because first thing comes to mind in my district is Hampton Lakes, right? So have you received any complaints from any homeowners there?
Yes.
I'm not surprised. All right, and they're on Austin Drive.
Cold sand right there, the lake going down behind there.
Okay.
Tim, this is good to see, and I wish we'd had this 25 years ago, and you and I have talked privately about various houses and the situations we've had calls on, so, you know, this going forward, new houses, it'll give some people protections, whether or not having to pay out 19,000 dollars in repairs after an incident. It'll just get it fixed on the front end.
Y'all bought something out of debt. Yeah. And I'm, I'm thinking just like Commissioner Martin, like code, what, 10 inches clearance on a slab? And that's not, if I remember, I'm just, I'm doing my.
Close.
Close.
Just like.
Say close. But that's not enough.
Just out of curiosity, would there be any remedy for a homeowner if a builder did something inappropriate after this? Because we know what you say, but we hope that builders will do what you say do.
That would be a question for their attorney.
Well, now, I'll rephrase that question for you. Is there a process by which we could inspect after the pad is poured or after the construction is done to make sure that they met that qualification?
We perform an inspection before the foundation gets poured, so at that time, we'd be observing, do we have a situation that needs to be addressed?
How about rough end, could we add that as a, as a rough end? Do we do a rough end inspection before a final inspection?
Yes, sir. So when they form up the slab, at that time, we'll be looking to see their elevation in relation to the road. So before even any concrete gets poured, we should have a dress this.
But they don't get, they don't get far ahead. I mean, he's doing it at the beginning.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
That's the time to do it.
Right, two points. So one, to make sure it's being done, two, to make sure it's being done where we don't have to fight a battle of, I got a $250,000 old house here now, and you're going to need to fix that. Pick it up, pull four more inches.
And just, I mean, I guess that will end up putting another checklist on your inspection on the house?
Yes, sir.
That it was done, great, because I have seen firsthand where you followed all those rules and had every high and dry, and the landlord or the homeowner decided, oh, I won't worry hard, level, and then you're getting a call that everything's flooding as well, if you had to change the grade of the land. So you got that recorded, that's, that's protection for everybody, not only, you know, the homeowner, but the contractor that was involved. So if you want to.
Chairman, motion to postpone to the next meeting to vet it. Second.
Second. All in favor of I?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Jason, you got a first reading of the amendment for the purchase order for local preference?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So this is, we talked about this a few weeks back. I believe Commissioner Kitchen's recommended going to a point system on all RFPs, and I think the number that was thrown out was 25 points should be awarded to qualified local bidders, and so we revised the draft that we had before to reflect that. It's in page 12 of your packet there, number two, up towards the top of the page. And then we also added a tiebreaker provision in case two, two were tied. Those are the only changes that have been made since you saw the prior draft.
And this is only for projects other than what we're using state funding, federal funding?
Right, you wouldn't be able to do it with state and federal funding.
Further questions? Need a motion to.
We need a second reading, don't we?
Right, so, yeah, it would be a motion to approve the first reading tonight, and then it'll come back at the next meeting for the second reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Commissioner Kitchen, you had an agenda item you want to bring to us?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. And so I'll take a little bit of privilege to, I made a few notes that I wanted to kind of get off my chest a little bit, also I will, I will end up with a, with a question or a motion on this. But, you know, we all know the most, the hottest topic right now, data centers. Everybody knows that. With the social media buzz, I'm just going to be honest, there's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of speculation, and even a lot of just downright accusations. And, you know, but in the midst of all that, there's so much viable information that's also coming in. There's so much from all the people out there that have done their homework and have studied and researched this that are bringing information to us in any form that we can get it that has been just viable and vital to us. So I want to say thank you for that. And also to the planning and zoning board and the staff, they've done a ton of work on this as well. And so based on last night's conversation at that planning and zoning meeting, is why I asked to be amended to, for the agenda to be amended, to discuss some of the, what would be a recommendation to us that has not come to us yet, because that comes in the next meeting, but just hearing the conversations last night, there's a, there's a valid concern of whether the advertisement was properly put out. So I just want to say, I want everybody to know that we're trying our best to be proactive on these data centers, and I honestly believe that the amendments adopted by the board in September were pretty in place for protection, and not specifically to ag, commercial, industrial, any of that, but, but the title is data centers. So it is for all data centers, no matter where they apply to be. It's for anyone that is wanting to come here. So one of the comments last night was let's rescind all those amendments, that text amendment. My worry about that is he then removed the protections of the, of any data center that wants to come here. So that, that's a little concerning for me. I heard another concern about tax abatements and pilot programs. We're going to give them a huge benefit, anybody that comes into the county. I'm going to say this on record, the state of Georgia has recommended that, that they're not given tax abatements for data centers, and I don't know that, I'm not going to speak for anybody on this board, but I don't know that we have an appetite to do it either. I just don't see, we have a formula for the amount of jobs and the amount of money and the amount of taxes that come into this county from a business to be even qualifying for a discussion about tax abatement or pilot programs, and I don't think they would meet any of those criteria. They, they're, they're making money. There is, there is benefit to it, but there's, I don't think they fit that criteria for pilot. So to the main thing I want to talk about, Chairman, is my, one of my biggest concerns is the pause on DRIs. And for people that don't know, that's a developmental regional impact study. I probably do at least one a week on different projects in my day job, and that's, there's been a temporary pause at the state level with DCA, and that's concerning because it's only paused on data centers. That ought to say something. I have some real concern with that, and it's our understanding that maybe end of November, there's going to be a ruling come down on that, and probably 30 days after that. So that, that's concerning that we don't have any of those, those in place. So Chairman, with this, and if it's in, if it's appropriate, I'd make, I'd make a motion that we put a 90-day moratorium on any data centers. This would allow the Jones County Board of Commissioners to further study the effects that a data center has on any of our resources, on our health, on our welfare, on businesses, on residents within this county. It'll also provide us the time to evaluate and strengthen any ordinances or codes that we have or don't have in place. So I think that, I think that will be beneficial to the county, because I honestly believe that we're trying our best to be proactive on this. I looked up how many code ordinance changes there have been in the last six or eight months. There's only 11 counties in Georgia that are proposing amendments to their codes right now, based on data centers only. And so we're one of those 11, so I feel like out of 159 counties, we're not that far behind the eight ball. These things didn't really pop up until 2023, and not, not hot and heavy, and I think everybody's just trying to figure it out, and I don't want to figure it out the wrong way. So that would be my motion, Chairman, if we could put a 90-day moratorium until we figure out the DRIs, the codes, ordinances, and, and give us a chance to be educated and educate.
Second to the motion.
All right, second discussion. Mr. Martin, you got a smile on your face. You want to start?
You know, I find it sometimes funny, right? And then sometimes humorous, and there's a difference. And I would say that for some reason, we now have to act between what we normally allow for agenda items, like we have to act, and I don't know why we have to act, because there's no data center on record for this county. Like they haven't done any of the work to become a data center, other than somebody saying, hey, you know, it was a good spot, they applied for zoning planning, but they haven't done the legwork, they haven't done any of the studies, they haven't contracted with Tri-County, they haven't done that stuff. So I'm trying to figure out, why do we violate our own rules, right? Because you've got to get on the agenda Thursday before. And then they pulled their application, so what is the haste? Because we dictate what happens in this county, and at what pace it happens in this county. And so that's why I'm smiling, because I don't normally see Sam back up a little bit. And, you know, I know he had to process and weigh on that for a while, because he better than anybody in this building, deals with this stuff on a regular, and, and I think understands it probably a little better. So then on the other side, you know, I don't know the hoopla, because I'm not on Facebook. I think I'm into Jones Countyans, but, you know, I don't read the stuff, because most of the times, to Sam's point, it's not exactly accurate. And I wish the people that had issues with the data center had gone to visit some data centers, right? And so at least having an informed decision about what a data center is, the noise it makes, the impact on the community, rather than throwing people and under the bus, and I heard all kind of crazy stuff where commissioners got threatened, I'm like, this is crazy, in Jones County. But I get it. And so from that perspective, I understand. I'm not, I'm not in the mood or the temperament to, to change rules because of that pressure. This is why we were elected, to make tough decisions. And I think you guys have to appreciate the fact that we've never done anything harmful to this county, ever. And in my three terms, now in my fourth term, we've never raised taxes, and we've always been conscientious of the people, and I understand that that is probably the impetus behind this. But we've paused because we put stuff in the ordinance, we have readings with regard to this, and we're trying to do the right thing. And we trust that the bodies that are elected will do that, and so will we. So whatever the will is of the board, so be it.
Chairman, I will respond to my buddy, because he's right, I don't, I don't normally back up, and I don't know, I mean, I, I stand behind what I, what I believe to the end of the day. And there's a real concern about this backup, and that is the information that we heard last night was that somehow we missed something and that the text amendment that are in place are not valid. If that is true, then we don't, we're not protected, which is the same reason we had that meeting a month and a half ago to get those protections. Since last night to today, we have not had enough time to vet whether the validity, accuracy, or anything else, the legality of what happened, so, which is why I'm like, let's put a hold on things until we figure out what's going on. I don't think it hurts us in any way, and I think there's a risk of us being hurt by not having those protections.
Ladies first? Anything you want to say? Mr. Wood?
I agree with Sam. It's, it's, we need to be perceived with caution.
That's right. And it's due to all of us. Somebody asked me today, so how do we get rid of them? Everybody willing to throw your iPhone away? How many people?
Or Samsung.
You work in a doctor's office.
You can't go, you can't go nowhere. You go to, you go out to eat for a family outing, there's five people in the family all have iPhones. That's what's driving it right there, you know? Give me a rotary phone. A lot of y'all are old enough to know, need to use a rotary phone. Party line.
I had that.
What? Amazon had a glitch yesterday. What do you think that was? It's a data center. Come on, guys. Your healthcare, everything that we do, the software that is running at the school systems is all based on a data center. There is no, in this government center, we run on a data center. Literally, we don't own any software that's on a dedicated server inside the building. If the data center shut down, we're shut down. And, and even some of you guys with high-tech cars, you know, it's connected to a data center somewhere, but healthcare, school systems, the government, the airlines, if you want to trust them right now, all of that is connected, and we need data centers. The reality is, for all of us that are on Facebook, TikTok, and everywhere else, we rely on them to store these hundreds of pictures, to store all of our medical records and everything else. And so we have to do what's right. I agree to Sam, we have to do what's right to make sure that there is a home for them, because without data centers, we're in trouble.
Because right now, China owns most of our data centers, so everything that you're in this phone doing is going to China to a data center. Okay? Remember that. That's one big drive for the data centers in the United States, and it's just not Georgia. Google Ohio, they're, right now, they're getting hit. I mean, like you go down the road, and every county has been hit by data centers. And I'd much rather us have some very strong footholds than to have something we, that we can't back up, and they can be in here. Okay? And that's what we tried to do, and that's why we're backing up right this minute, and I agree with Sam, I would like to do the 90-day moratorium.
Any more discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
On the other hand, no.
Four and one. Department heads. Mr. Trousky, got anything else tonight? Then I'll.
We never get to see him this late in the.
No, we don't get to see him like this, then we'll get Public Works out here.
My only thought was with the moratorium in place, do we want to begin the text amendment process to address that section 97 again?
Right.
That was my only comment.
Need a motion to start the text amendment also?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion to begin the text amendment.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
You opposed?
Aye.
Got five. Thank you. All right, Jerry? Nothing? Or you got Jerry coming up tonight? Jerry, Jerry, we got two Jerry. What Jerry you want up there?
That is not Jerry back there, that is Peewee.
Peewee. Yeah, still just working on Jake's Woods over there, probably get the culverts in this week for the parking lot, and I know John Simmons been working real hard over there on the trails and all. that stuff. He's coming along.
That's great. So you got the mower now? The grinder?
Yes.
That's great. He's, uh, he's kind of scoped that thing out. I think he's going to use it more than anybody. Would that be fair to say?
Oh, yeah. And making a trip to Fayette County, November the fifth, I think, to look at some dirt road reclamation they're doing. If we can get any tips from those guys.
Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jason, I think this needs, uh, you're next, I think. Legate, anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, says some comments. Anybody like to come forward tonight?
I got one.
Sure, come on. Hand raises.
Yeah, it's tomorrow at one o'clock.
Tomorrow at one o'clock.
The dedication of the roads will be in great. It's tomorrow at one o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Where?
Just takes the sun, just in tomorrow.
You introduce yourself and, and your address for the, for everybody back home watching.
Uh, for the room, uh, for the board, uh, my name's Ryan Wilson. I live at two forty-eight Chambers Road, right off of forty-nine and eighteen. Backing up to some of the properties in question over the last couple of weeks. First off, I'd like to extend a thanks to Commissioner Kitchens for, uh, doing the due diligence, and then the rest of the board as well, and considering the protections for the county. I know we talked about a lot of education, and again, I want to extend, uh, my appreciation for, uh, for providing that, uh, to the folks who are concerned about this. Whether that be, uh, due to well-informed notions or, or ill-informed notions, uh, thank you for, uh, for educating the folks on that. Uh, I did want to, uh, bring up, uh, a couple of points as well, uh, just some research that, that I'd done, based on the meeting off of the seventh, and out of curiosity. So looking at some, uh, potential factors, not necessarily what, what we want to do with water and some of the environmental concerns, those have been sort of at the forefront of what's been discussed. What I do want to talk about are some of the long-term effects and the long-term impacts to, uh, industrial equipment, um, and that life cycle, and what that will mean. And just address some of the provisioning for making sure, uh, that a decommissioning or change to ownership process is also included, uh, to make sure that there are no lasting impacts to the county in a negative way, when the end-of-life cycle comes due on not only the internal pieces of equipment, uh, but the facilities themselves. And that can be data centers, or that can be any other industrial or commercial site. So, uh, really, my, my ask, and I'll keep it brief, uh, again, trying to stick to the minute. As far as, uh, alternatives go and, and energy considerations, um, again, I think there's a lot of opportunity, and there's a precedent. But I, I would ask for caution and consideration, looking at those long-term effects. There's a, there's a real estate company, um, McKenzie and Company, uh, that talked about basically three different stages that a developer would have, uh, to commercially develop properties like this. One of those concerns, potentially, uh, is what's called shell construction, in which case they come and they'll develop, run utility to a site, they'll build an empty shell of a building, and then they'll sell that to the next buyer. So potentially more complex, uh, application, um, where I think it would be greatly appreciated at the very minimum, um, to make sure the public gets that transparent information, especially given the acreage and the impacts that that size and scale of, of change would create. So again, I, I really appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, another hand?
Good evening. My name is Mark Huestead. I live at one seven eight seven Georgia Highway eighteen east. I do appreciate the work that was put in and the notifications that went out in a flurry of activity over the data center this past week. I am an IT guy. I live where you talk about, in terms of a job. And so data centers do have their places and everything like that, but I was also part of the land use, uh, five-year plan meetings a couple of years ago. And in particular, that particular spot on eighteen east was not part of the land use plan for that area, right? So it was, it was meant to be ag out eighteen east. So we have an industrial park. It should go in industrial park, right? That's a fine place for it. I understand why they want it eighteen east, because it's flat. The industrial park isn't as flat. So I can understand why someone would want to go over there, but in terms of the land use plans for the five-year plan that we have, and that we worked on, which was a cool meeting, if you've not been, go, um, it was, uh, it was neat to see. So thank you very much, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No more citizens? If none, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Martin, you want to start? Swap the sides of the room, we started that, that side left out.
I wasn't here, so could you start over there?
No, that's why we start with you. You got left out, so you, you go start and finish.
Yeah. I'm just going to say, you know, I didn't understand it when I moved here twenty-four years ago from Connecticut. Yeah, I'm a Yankee. It's okay. But my grandfather, great-great-grandfather, has been in Georgia since seventeen ninety-five. And both sides of my family come from Cuthbert and Americas. And, yeah, South Georgia. And I appreciate now the living here that they talked about fondly. I'm ecstatic about being able to leave my house and not have to worry about anything, other than somebody knocked my mailbox over today.
That was me.
Okay.
Didn't have yellow paint on it.
Didn't have yellow paint, wasn't the school bus. So for the record, I'm going to contact my neighbor who has a ring right in front of my mailbox. I'll find out who it was. But other than that, I've never had any problems, and I like that about our county. Um, I, I'm not excited about a twelve thousand, twenty thousand person entity coming here, right? So the data center kind of was sexy to me, like, hey, it's not going to be that many people, want to have impact. Great return, right? Revenue stream, um, looked at some of the water. It was going to be closed loop. Okay, cool, so we fill it up, and then, hey, um, we add water as needed, like a plant, right? And so I was hopeful for the revenue, because we look at the budget every year, right? We're conscious of that. You, some of you all live on dirt roads, and some of you live on some roads that are dilapidated. And I was ecstatic about the potential of paving all of those things in a faster manner than maybe sixty years on our current paving cycle. And for some of you who have been on some roads for twenty-five years, don't worry, your turn's coming. Someday. But I, I had hoped with the data center would come faster. And so I started to speculate. It's kind of like when you buy a lottery ticket, like, what I could do if I win. I did not necessarily want it in the neighborhood, um, but if it could go in an industrial park, but we have adequate resources, and even supported by Making Water Authority, um, that would be great. I hope this experience has helped us all to see what it takes to change, um, government actions, because we're here for you, and at the end of the day, we really mean that. But also looking at the future, because at some point, we're going to have to make a decision about a business entity, because that's what the industrial park is for. Is the data center the highest and best? Eh, maybe, it could have been. But I also want to caution us to not be the no county too, where we've invested in an industrial park, but businesses don't want to come here because they know that our citizens will push back. Um, and that's the concern. Millions of dollars is, are invested in the industrial park, and we hope that something lands there. But I hope that this doesn't scare a friendly business to the county, um, because we want a good partner in whoever comes here. So with that being said, thank you guys for all of your feedback. I'm glad that I don't live in District Three, because I only received maybe five phone calls, uh, and I haven't been threatened, which thankfully, that doesn't really well go over well for me. But I hope that we understand that, again, we are here for you, um, and we're going to do our best. We have been doing that. We have a track record of being consistent, um, and doing our best to maintain the budget, keep taxes low or reasonable, um, and to invest where we need to. So, thank you.
Mr. Bone?
This has been a long two, three weeks. My phone rings at all kind of the hours. I get text messages. I get messages on Facebook. Guess what? It's my backyard too. Okay? I'm a fifth generation. I've hunted on that land. I've snuck into the king's pond a few times, and got ran out. Okay? I know exactly where it's at, and it's right beside my cousin. Okay? All of my family lives on that end of the dirt road. My five generations grew up on Chambers Road on one side, and Pioneer on the other. And now we live down here, and the rest of the family lives there. So every time there was the accusation, it came out of my mouth. They heard it from me. Johnny Avery's sitting back there in the back. Have I talked to you at all? I talked to one. Exactly. I talked to one person in my family about it, and that was the one person that it was going to affect the most. And that was the one that was directly beside the piece of property, okay? Somebody posted to come and have a noise ordinance in my front yard, and I said, come on over, we'll sit on the porch and have a talk. One person showed up. We stayed there for three hours talking. Ended up, he sat down beside my husband and said, Chris Bone, I ain't seen you since high school. They went to high school together. Didn't even know they lived that close together. It's amazing how just, what, Monday, to, what day did I call you to make sure y'all was okay, Rebecca? We had something that happened in the community, and we were heard that had a gunman on the loose, and, because somebody had been shot, and we was all on our phones, texting everybody. I don't have your number. Well, you were the other direction.
You were probably it.
But that's what we do. We do that in a small town. And it's so much easier to come face to face. Ryan, Ryan has seen me at my awful worst, because my children will bring animals home and think that I'm supposed to be responsible for them. And guess who ends up having to go get them from the sheriff, from their house, from the sheriff's department? Okay? So he has seen me at the worst, but he's still my neighbor. Things could have been a lot different. And I hope going forward, we put down some groundwork to protect Jones County. Forty decibels. Do y'all know what forty decibels are? My voice right now is more than forty decibels. That's a hard number to hit if you're going to be in a business. You riding your vehicles, it's above forty decibels. That's just one of them that we, we put on there, that I thought, there's no way, they can't get that low. If they do, they're going to be, it's going to be remarkable that they get to that, and we are going to be the ones that have forced it. The lighting, we had made sure we had the lighting thing in there, so that it would have to be downward lighting. I found out something this past week at a legislative conference. One of the big things that people are starting to push, it's called day, I mean, night, day-night lighting. And it is a downward-facing lighting that is a very dim light, but if something comes into the area, it brightens up a little, then it goes back down. It's kind of like when you go to the beach at Jekyll Island, and the lights are for the turtles. That's the kind of dim light that it produces at a normal time. But if it has to get brighter because of activity, it brightens up. Okay? So there's a lot of things that not only Jones County is learning, but the state of Georgia is learning. Yes, I used Meta quite a few times as an example. Guess what? That's the only one I've ever been to. Who could else, who else could I use as an example? I got to go inside the building. I got to stand outside the building, and guess what? There was no noise outside of the building. I could hear the birds twerping. Okay? Inside of the building? Oh, my gosh! But it had, like, one and a half concrete feet walls to keep that noise interior. They treat their employees, even though there are only two hundred of them, really good. I had to go through almost two weeks of background checks and everything. The day before, I'm standing, having to sign paperwork and show my ID again that morning, show my ID. They have credentials, my background check. They check the ID as we get on the bus, and the security follows us front and back to lead us to the data center. So the number-one job at a data center is not IT people. It's security. Security guards that make a hundred thousand dollars a year. We would lose a lot of our police officers to that job. We fuss about not having enough nobody to hire. If we got a job in our, in the, in the industrial park that offered eight hundred jobs, where are they coming from? Where are they moving? We don't have any houses to put them in. So there are so many positives also, but it's got to be in the right place with the right limitations. And we know that. We know that. So that's all I got to say.
I'm going to do some history. I've been here since sixty-eight. Nineteen sixty-eight, we didn't have a traffic light. How many of y'all remember when we got our first traffic light? Seventy, what, one? Two, something like, two?
I was two, but.
I was just born.
How many remember going, that when you drove through Gray, you had to drive like this? Why? Because you knew everybody that you saw on that road. And boy, let me tell you something, if you went to church Sunday morning and you hadn't waved at somebody, they'd let you know real quick. I miss that Gray. Not getting it back, but we still, we're still a strong community. People coming together like this. Like I said, Facebook, uh, it's the devil's work. I mean, not all of it. I mean, I, I love keeping up with friends and stuff, but the devil's working hard on Facebook to turn all of us against each other. We're, we're too, I mean, everybody wants to come to Jones County for a reason. And that's because, you know, we're, we come together. I've said this time again, we come together when we need it. I don't care what it is. Let it be a fundraiser, whatever, we're going, we're coming together. I miss that Jones County. But I'm going to still sit here and fight for every, every, everything I can to make sure we stay there. And I appreciate everybody that's coming forward. I've told several that you made our, you made our life easy, as far as Commissioner Kitchen said, bringing us information that we might not have known. I, I can, in ten years, I can't tell you the number of times that we've had people come up scared to death to talk at that microphone, induce themselves, and say, have y'all thought about this? And there's five of us sitting there looking at each other, we ain't thought about that right before we ended up making a decision. Let's, let's sit down and think about it. Input is important. But, uh, like I said, I wish we could go back to waving. Waving our hands rather than throwing these around. Like I said, same several people said they wish you could throw them away. Yeah, many of the, last, last couple of weeks, yeah.
I've had, my wife just said, put it down, your blood pressure's too high. But, uh, but that's all I got.
You know, we're one community. Past couple of weeks been tough. I've talked to, I've lost count of the number of people I've talked to. Lot of them I know, lot of them I didn't know. It's good to talk to them, and I'm going to consider the ones I didn't know new friends. You know, I've had discussions from people who are against the data centers, and I've had discussions with people that were for the data centers. And... And it's all good points. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, we all want low taxes. We all want services. We gotta have things to come into this county and, you know, Chris, you know, I'll fight for forest and farmland all day long to preserve it, keep it like it is and, you know, keep our countryside peaceful and like it's been for the last two hundred years. But there's some certain areas that's, you know, are set out to be developed, such as industrial park. And that's a, you know, it's an open door there for various industries. We've had industries approach this county and I, they come with a code name. We can't really disclose what they are and they could be anything from a X to a Z to an A to a B. You just don't know. It could be something you want in this county. It could be something that is a whole lot worse than a data center. And you and I talked about that earlier, Mr. Chairman. But, you know, we want low taxes and we want, we need better services. I mean, I'd love to have been on the fire department since June eighteenth nineteen ninety-four. I would love to see a full-time fire department. But we will not get there without industry where they're gonna pay this much tax and use this much service. That's how you get better services, whether we build countywide water and we talk about like the upcoming item on the election of running water out to these areas. I look at water in the ground, fire protection. You get a fire hydrant within X distance of your house, guess what? You get a much better insurance rating. And you get a water tank like the one we're building at Light and Ty, that's gonna boost Graham Road, Homer Roberts, City of Gray, Highway eleven north. That's gonna help firefighting. Because it's, it's one thing to sit on a truck, and I have been in subdivisions. And I've got pictures on my phone, be glad to show you, where I've got a five-inch line going into a Class A pumper and it's collapsed because I cannot get the water because there's a hydrant being pulled from down the way by another truck. We're fighting a fully involved house fire. I'm not sure if, Mark, if you were at that fire.
He was, that was his very first time sitting on the...
Well, but it was, that was a bad feeling and we need water infrastructure. And so we're, we're up here, five individuals, fighting for Jones County to get the services and things we need. And, you know, I appreciate all the attention on Facebook and things like that, but there's so many other things that we need to fight for in this county. I mean, just come to mind, D-Fax, there's children in need, whether it be a castle worker. I think Dayline, you're, you work with that? I mean, there's some counties in this state that have four foster homes in the entire county. I was down in South Georgia a couple of weeks ago and I was talking with a caseworker. D-Fax out of Alvaloa, working, talking with her. And she says, we got like four, maybe five. If this home closes, we'll, we'll be just one without. I mean, it's a serious thing in this state. There's so much need and I appreciate people getting involved, but we need, there's a lot of things people can branch out for, whether you're a foster parent or just support a foster family, do something. But there's, there's a lot of things to fight for and we need to make sure they're worthwhile. And data center, keeping it in the right areas is very worthwhile. I get that. But, you know, it just, it's been a very, very tough couple of weeks and we're just trying to make sure the right information's out and kind of squash the misinformation and, you know, keep people's heads from spinning off because they're so upset. That's all I have tonight.
Include Larry.
That's it. Because it's, it's been, it's been tough. When you lay up in the middle of the night worrying about the stack of emails that you got printed out that, you know, and they're all some valid points, some misinformation. But you just try and make sense and just have a cool, calm, collected head and hand about it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Best of last, right?
Yes, sir. All I'm gonna say is that we signed up for this. We, we signed up for it. We love this county. I love every one of y'all out there and I'm gonna do everything I can to fight for it, to have, for the reason that I got involved is my granddaughter was two years old. She's twelve now. And I want her to have the same opportunities I had growing up my whole life in Jones County. And I'm gonna make dang sure that she does. So saying that, I'm gonna switch subjects a little bit, Chairman, and so as commissioners, we can't promote or oppose the SPOS, but we can educate on it. And I do want people to know, I saw a lot about really tying the two together about data centers and SPOS and all that. The SPOS is not an additional tax. We don't get extra money from it. It is the existing sales tax, one cent sales tax that we have in the county right now. And everybody that comes through our county, Friday night football games, Dairy Queen, when they're doing the hero days. Every time, every time we have a game, whether it's youth football, grandparents coming from out of towns, every one of those people are buying gas, groceries, food, something in our, in our community. That's the money that's helping pay for the needs that we have in Jones County. And I'll be the first to admit, when we created this list for SPOS this time, you know, everybody wants something that they look forward to, like a, a new fire department, new recreation department, new this, new that. We're down to where we got the needs we gotta have and those are roads. We've got a courthouse that is a hundred years old, hundred, what, a hundred and twenty years old. And there's no way to safely bring people into that courthouse amongst the people that are, the defendants and the prosecution side, defendant side. It's, it's a problem and we have to fix that. We have to fix our roads. We have to fix things like that. And that money's gotta come from somewhere. And I hope people don't ever think that it's a threat to say, well, you know, we'll just raise taxes. That is the last thing. And I will, I will have a conversation with anybody, but I won't argue with anybody. I got a wife and I got a twelve-year-old granddaughter that gives me all the game I want if I wanna argue. But I will have a real conversation because I can show you the data. Since we've been on this board in the last ten years, we have rolled the millish rate back every year. We're three point four millish points lower than we were in twenty sixteen, right now, today. I'll show you a pie chart of every budget that we've had. Have we gone up on our budgets? Absolutely. There's no lying about that. We've gone up to the tune of about twenty-three percent. You know what? The cost of living has gone up and the inflation has gone up over that same period of time, about thirty-eight percent. So we're, we're not keeping up with inflation. We are increasing. We, we can talk about the property values. We were under a state mandate being, about to be penalized because our values were so out of whack. Some were too low, some were too high. I'm sure every call I get are not from the ones that were valued too low. They were the ones that were valued too high and are getting caught in the middle of trying to fix it now. But by law, we have to fix it. Those things are painful. In two to three years, the pain's gonna be a lot less than it is now because it's gonna be leveled out and people are gonna be paying their fair share of what they should be. So I, I'd be glad anybody to have a conversation about the validity of the SPOS, the impact of the SPOS, the history of the SPOS, what, what it does for the county from an educational standpoint. So I'm glad to have that conversation with anybody on, on budgets. So just, I'll leave it at that. But it has nothing to do with, has nothing to do with data centers. I can promise you that. So, thank y'all. My number's on the internet. Anybody that wants to call it will, has, probably will again.
Yep, same here. You're slacking on your job.
I'm making an motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is that a unanimous?
Yes, aye.